All right, looks like we got most everybody here, but we don't have Ryan yet, but. Everyone else is accounted for, so I think we can begin. Taylor, you want to tell me when the? Oh, there's Ryan. Do you want to get us streaming on Facebook? Okay.
Yep, you're good to go.
All right, I'm going to call the, I'm going to call the order of the meeting of the Bath Township Planning Commission. It's March 23rd, 2021. Are there any additions or modifications to the agenda as it's been distributed? Jason?
Um, I have three things for just brief discussion. One is welcoming our newest planning commission member. Second, update on where we are with the comprehensive plan. And then two, I, I update on the Webster Road Committee.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's just, we can put the welcome, I think, immediately. I was going to do that immediately after we approved the agenda. Then the other two items, I think we can put into if you're, if you're okay with that planning commission comments up towards the end of the meeting.
Oh, two, two of those three are going to be covered under communications. And I guess we can actually cover all three more than likely because Karen is here as well.
Well, then I withdraw my amendments.
All right. Hearing or seeing no other suggested modifications, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as distributed?
I'll move to prove the agenda submitted.
For.
All right, and we got support all in favor of the motion. Say aye. Okay, so the agenda has been approved. So yes, we have a new planning commissioner, Joel Gutske. Joel, welcome to the planning commission. We kind of communicated by email, but good to see your face and glad you're with us tonight.
Got a face for radio. Thank you. It's good to, it's good to be back. It's been a while. Looking forward to working with everybody.
And I know, I mean, I know this, I'm not sure if others know it, but you, you were on the planning commission in the past, I think, and perhaps other township boards as well.
I was.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's great, great to have some experience too on the planning commission, so.
Well, I appreciate the welcome. Thanks, everybody.
All right, so the third agenda item is just a disclosure of conflicts of interest. So planning commissioners, if you have any conflicts of interest with the agenda items, please let us know now. Okay, not seeing any, so let's move on. So we have the first opportunity for general public comment. You can speak, if you wish to speak to the planning commission, you can speak to agenda items or non-agenda items. So would anyone from the public like to address the planning commission at this time? Dan?
Thank you. First off, I'm looking forward to hopefully learning your priorities as we work through our project. But again, I just want to thank, thank you all for considering ending the application window. As I see that there are some edits to the ordinance, I think that a shorter application window. Shortening or considering shortening the application. I think that a shorter application. All the stakeholders involved. And then the discussion regarding the potential de-prioritization of medical facilities at the last meeting is a bit confusing. For me and the, and the years that we've been attending these meetings. Today, medical marijuana patients are able to access their medicine at a substantially lower cost for medical facilities. So what I'm hoping to learn from the planning commission is, is our medical patients still a high priority here in Bath Township? And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Would anyone else from the public like to address the planning commission at this time? Yeah, Ms. Kabees, is it, or Gavis?
Ms. Gavis, thank you. I wanted to make a comment on Agenda Item 8B with regard to the adult use marijuana ordinance. I don't know if you prefer me to make that during the agenda item, or if you'd like to hear from me now, whichever.
Hear from her now, I'd prefer.
Okay, thank you. I think you've heard from my partner before, Laura Genovich. We represent the Botanical Company, which is a local Michigan company, has a state-of-the-art facility in Lansing. Which I think we've invited the board, at least the township board, we'd also invite the planning commission to come visit. And the Botanical Company would love to do business in Bath Township. We're hoping to see an amendment to the proposed ordinance that would allow more than one establishment to promote the competitive process. We, we really appreciate the planning commission revisiting this competitive process, make it as fair and open as possible. And we'd also like the, the board to consider amending it to remove the preference for existing medical marijuana facilities. To again, ensure a more competitive process. We look forward to hopefully the opportunity to work with the township more on this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Ms. Gavis.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments from the public? Not seeing any, so let's, um, let's move on. So we have one set of minutes to approve, March 9th, 2021. Any changes to those minutes as submitted?
I move your approval as submitted.
Seconded.
Seconded by John. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sound, and the motion carries. Okay, so let's move on to communications. Nick?
All right, so I think we already covered one item I had written down, which was welcoming our new planning commissioner. So I'll go ahead and jump straight to number two. It's my understanding that Taylor has an update regarding the status of the comprehensive plan.
That is correct. Thank you, Nick. So I wanted to let you all know, which I was planning to do anyways, but thank you for the reminder, Jason. That I have started work with, her name is Catherine. She was actually recommended to me by George. She is helping me with the design process for the comprehensive plan, just to take a little bit of the workload from me. We have finalized her contract, so she has begun work on that. I have sent her the sections that you all have approved thus far, that I have also done some editing to. We have a tentative date to have it completed by May 1st, but there is a big possibility that we will have it done sooner. So as I get updates from her and approved sections, I will of course let you all know.
So I knew you all would be excited to hear that. I was excited to hear it this morning. So lastly, I know Jason had asked about the Webster Road Committee. I know Superintendent Hilda Brandt is here, and she had mentioned something to me today. So Karen, if you have any bit of an update, that'd be great.
I do. Thank you, everyone. So we are polling currently the members, Ray Severi, George Baker, John Reich. We've invited Matt Wenley to join us and help me. I've got one more person, Ray, John, George, Joe Benzi, Mr. Trustee Joe Benzi. Will be joining us, and we are polling to see if we can meet possibly early next week. Those will be announced on the township website, and they will be public and taped as well, so they can be archived on the website. So they will be fully open for people to view and make comments during. So I hope you'll join us for those.
You can.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Dan.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions regarding the communications from commissioners? Okay, so let's move on. So we've got, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. So we've got two items on our new business, which are both introductions of pending site plan applications. And then we've got a public hearing and old business, and we've got a couple of ordinance issues to address. So let's start with new business, and let's start with the Marsh Road Townhomes. Nick, do you want to lead us into this issue?
Sure. So thank you, everyone, as we. Lead our way through a heavy agenda, like you said. So this project originally was brought to me back in October. At that time, I had spoken with Mike Markey, who submitted the application. About the project, and we had had an initial discussion, said that he wanted to get some agency comments to bring into the planning commission. And so I had done that, given those comments to him. Then, you know, things got quiet for a little while, as they tend to from time to time. He's now brought us back and bringing this to you all for introduction. And then we can have another meeting with this and have a staff report and full agency review comments. I believe I have one set of comments still outstanding. And so, as I usually do, try not to bring them piecemeal. I like to bring all of the agent, agency comments at once. So this is a proposal for 11 townhouses, split between two buildings. One will have seven units and the other will have four. It's on an unusually shaped lot, actually, across the street from the storage facility that we're having the public hearing on tonight. And I believe between myself and Mike, we can answer any questions that you have. Mike, am I forgetting anything? Okay.
So, so Mike is the applicant or a representative of the applicant?
He is the applicant.
Okay, and Mike, would you like to, and there's no need to, if you don't desire, but would you like to introduce the project at all, or tell us a little bit more about what you're intending to do?
Yes. Am I live?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Well, basically, what we've got is facing Coleman Road. We've got seven townhouses that are, all have one-car garages. And each one is 1152 square feet, plus a bonus room in the, in, in the lower level. Then, on the four-unit building, we have two, we've got two more 18 by 32s with one-car garages. And, and then we've got two that are 24 by 32, that are, are with a two-car garage. It's a, it's, we, we've designed it so that it meets all the zoning requirements. And, and we're just looking for approval to be able to finalize out, out the plans. We expect to be able to start construction. I should say yes to spring, but the spring, spring is sprung already. But we're looking forward to getting this started during calendar year of 2021. If you look at the, at the renderings, I, I think it's, uh, they look pretty gosh darn good.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So just before we take commissioner comments or questions. So just to remind everybody here that this is a use that's permitted by Wright and the development, D-Development District, so no special use permit required here. And Nick, in your understanding, is there anything missing from the, the draft site plan that we have before us here?
Uh, the only thing, and this was something that John, Karen, John Wright, Karen and I discussed earlier today, is there was a little bit of confusion about the floor plans that had been included. Just because it looked like only one story of the floor plans were included, and we're, we were hoping that we could get some clarification.
And, and so we've got a couple of site plans here, and so I may be mistaken, but is there landscaping, lights and sign plans as well?
I'll have to double check my email, but we have landscaping. There's, for some reason, what I'm recollecting is that this was initially submitted to me before that ordinance was adopted by the Board of Trustees.
Okay, all right, well, you, you should check that. I don't think there's a landscaping plan in the packet, or maybe I'm missing that. Karen, do you have a comment? Karen?
Oh, thank you. There was a lag. I think we wondered about sidewalks as well.
Okay, yep, my apologies. Sorry, Dan, I want to clarify, this was submitted to me back in, in early September. So it was definitely before that ordinance was amended to include those requirements.
Okay, so there's no requirement to do so. I mean, we can just tell the applicant that we do have an ordinance that went into effect where we are requiring landscaping, lights and signage plans. And so I guess you're not held to those, that ordinance, but I think you'd, we'd appreciate it if we could see those details maybe at our next meeting. And then, so the sidewalk, I see reference to sidewalks. Is that because the sidewalks are not actually identified on the, the maps that we have? Is that the concern?
I think that was, was part of it, but it looked like it only was in front of the townhouses.
I see. Okay, yeah, John, did you have something to add?
I don't know what market Mr. Markey's got in mind for this project, but there's no provision for any green space or children play area, dog walk, anything like that. There's no sidewalks connecting the two buildings. There's no provision for a sidewalk to connect to, which I'm sure we're going to have a sidewalk along Saginaw at some point. It's goes up to the, heading to the Meyer property right now, so I'm sure it's going to be extended. And I'm not too concerned, but I also think that we need to be aware that that piece of Marsh Road is very narrow. And there's, I don't know how much right of way we have there, but that should be a concern, I'm sure.
Joel?
Yeah, I, I know it's early in the process, and there's lots of agency approvals that'll, that'll happen in this project before it reaches fruition. But two things that caught my eye immediately, looking at both the, the renderings and the plans, is that's a very steep grade as it sits right now on that property. And I didn't know if there was going to be some sort of retaining wall, holding up the rear rendering. If you take a look at the rear rendering, it doesn't, it looks like it's flat ground, and it's clearly not flat ground if you look at it as you drive by today. And I know earth moving and lots of planning can happen to, to take care of that. And then the other thing that immediately caught my eye was, you know, Joe Benzi will remember, if Joe, Joe's still on here. When we did the Bath Meyer project, that's Easterly, I guess. Entrance to the Meyer store has kind of a faux turning lane in it, that today even still kind of drives me a little crazy as I, and I use it. And I know that traffic gets a lot quicker on, on M78 or Saginaw than it is on Marsh Road northbound. But this seems to indicate that that's got some, somewhat of a, kind of a faux turning lane there too. And it's, as John said, that's a very narrow road right there. Just a couple of thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Joel. So, so Mike, too, you know, feel free to respond, or you know, we can take all comments and have you kind of respond at the end. But it might be easier, I guess, if you hear some things that you think need clarification or response to, you can jump in. Did you, do you have anything at this moment?
Yes, as far as landscaping plans, we, at the permitting process, we will make sure that we adhere to the landscaping plans. And your issue with the sidewalks, well taken. And, and so we can take care of those at the permitting process. As far as no second-story floor plans, we can, we can provide those for you. But I can't really completely design out the project until I got site plan approval, if you understand what I mean. One, one comes after the other. And again, we designed this to meet the zoning code, and that's why we're here today, is for the zoning. And I, I, oh, as far as the back elevations, I understand that the back elevations, because of the grade differential. Bottom line, that's, that's why it's almost like a walkout on the backside, or daylight for sure on the backside. To, to make sure that we've got plenty of, of fall away from the building. The front of the buildings, both of them, are fairly level with the road. And it's the backside that really falls off, and that's why, that's why we, we have designed it the way we have with the garages. Underneath on the, on the roadside. And, and, and daylight and walkout on the backsides.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So commissioners, other comments or questions for either the applicant, Nick, or other commissioners?
I had one question. I noticed you've got City Lansing standards in here. Is that going to get changed or what? There's one comment in the first sheet, up in the upper left-hand corner, it says City Lansing standards.
I apologize. The engineer must have, uh, 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 must have blown it.
The other comment I had is on the setbacks. I don't know what the setback requirements are off the, off Marsh or freeway entrance. But it seemed to me that dimension lines were, were drawn not at 90 degrees to the road right of way.
I, I would have to check into that, Ray.
Let's see what plan that was on. I guess at some point, Nick, you want to take a look at that and see, because I'm not sure what the, what the setback requirements are.
Yeah, Ray, which sheet are you, are you looking at?
I'm trying to find it. My, my computer's very slow going through these doggone drawings.
I understand that. They're heavy files. You know, this, this did go through review. It's 50-foot setback there on the one side. And then I believe 50 on the other side. So, you know, this did go through administrative review. Bert and I both looked at this. Of course, now these plans are frozen in my computer, so.
Mine too. Get a blank sheet here. Okay.
Hey, Ray.
Yeah.
Did you used to work for the City Lansing?
Yes, I did. A long time ago.
I, I, I understand.
Yeah, I left there in like 94 or something like that. I'm not sure exactly when it was. Okay, so it's on the sheet that, come on. It shows the site, the footprint, footprint of the buildings.
Yes, sir.
What sheet number is this, so I can find it? It's on the proposed site plan. If you move this over, Sheet C5.
Got it.
And see right there, at the, the buildings on the, the four, four-unit building, there's two setback dimensions. One's 42-foot setback and one's a 41-foot setback. Those dimension lines are parallel to the building. They're not perpendicular to the road right of way.
I, I'll, I'll check into it, Ray.
So I guess, I guess question is, Nick, is what, what setback is required right there?
50 feet.
Yeah, there's a setback line, a dotted line that goes diagonal and parallel with Saginaw, but there's no measurement there.
Right.
Okay.
But you'd expect that to be shorter, smaller than 41 feet, right?
Yeah, it would be, and that was required. If it's only 25-foot required, they may be okay, but I don't know what it is.
Front yard setback is 50 feet.
50.
50, five zero. Side yard is 10 feet, except for in the case of a corner lot where it shall be the same as the front yard. So both along Marsh and Coleman, it's 50 feet, and then the rear will be 30 feet. And the other side is 10 feet.
All right, well, yeah, it would be good if you, you had that, that measurement on there. It looks like you probably have 30 feet there, if that's the setback along Saginaw.
Along Saginaw? Or do you mean along Marsh?
No, I think, I mean, I think Ray's talking about along Saginaw, right? There's two setbacks that are noted there, but they're both diagonal, 45 degrees or so to Marsh. And so, but there's a setback line noted there, but there's no measurement from the corner of that four-unit building to the right of way.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Yep. That's, that diagonal 45-degree red dotted line, that is the, the property line.
No, I mean the other dotted line. It's a green or bluish setback line. Unless you blow up the plan, it's hard to read that, but it does say setback line, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it does. And it, it measures it in one direction. I, I see what's, it, it looks correct to me.
It's correct, but we don't have a measurement, do we, from the setback line to the right of way? We don't have a measurement.
It says 41-foot setback. I'm on page C5.
Yes.
It's diagonal.
Yeah.
I would, I want to go back to the first sheet and take a look at the, the shape of the lot.
Yeah, I understand the state of the lot, but those 41 and 42-foot setback dimensions don't mean anything. At least not to me, because they're going, they're commencing to a diagonal line. They should be dimensions from the corner of the building at 90 degrees to the Saginaw right-of-way line. And that should be 30 feet, which it probably is, but that's, that's the dimension we need.
Yeah.
Correct.
John, I saw your hand up. Do you want to jump in here on this?
No, no, I, I had another issue I'd, I'd like to address to Bert Gale about, but, and it's not necessarily related to this project. But at some point, are we going to require charging stations for electric vehicles? And if we are, then at what point are we going to do that? Because it's going to reflect on the electrical demand for each unit that is built.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
You are, Bert. Oh, okay. So there's no provisions anywhere written, neither in the electrical building or in your zoning ordinance, that would require an electric charging station ever?
Yes, I'm aware.
So if, and that's a great question, because it's coming, right? So it is definitely a discussion point that, that we probably ought to have at some point. There is some associated cost with putting in a charging station, as you might guess.
Yes.
Depending upon the size of the charging station and how many you want. So that, that's an excellent observation, and it's coming. We're going to, in the next 10 to 15 years, the projection is, is that we're going to see a lot of them.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Bert. Mike, if you're still there, I think you are. Can you tell me what the, the siding materials are? I see the elevations, but I'm not, I'm uncertain as to what that, what the material is for the siding. Do you know that?
It will be vinyl.
It's vinyl, and that's all vinyl, so I see sort of a plank kind of siding, and then I see sort of a panel siding. And then I see what looks to me like a, kind of a cedar shake kind of siding as well on the upper.
That is correct.
Is that right? And that's all vinyl?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, other comments or questions?
Am I unmuted? This is George.
This is George. Am I unmuted? I also wanted to echo, uh, Joel's, Mr. Gutsky's, uh, comment about the, uh, road there. Not only, not only does it, uh, come into that exchange on Marsh, but also, uh, it's a little slippery in the winter. So I didn't know if we could do anything extra with that road or not, but I just wanted to kind of echo and add on to that a little bit. That's it.
Thanks, George. All right, are there other comments, questions?
Dan, I think you can see that 30-foot setback line on C3. It is, it is there. It's just further, further down behind the building.
C3. Okay, yep. Yeah. These things are impossible, so I'll be thankful when we're all back in our room and we can actually look at large paper copies, because it's almost impossible to navigate around these digital copies.
I'm using a second screen that is really big to do so.
Yeah, mine's just not big enough, I think, to be able to see that. Uh, all right, and, oh, there we go. I'm on the wrong page. That's, okay, 30-foot setback. Have still been trying to, uh, not come into the township office if they can help it, but I do want all the planning Commissioners to know that we do have physical copies of these plans. If you'd like to look at them in more detail. Yeah. Okay, thanks. I do see that now, Ryan, so thank, thanks for knowing.
I see the 30-foot as well.
Yeah. Okay.
My only other question was, is there gonna be a concern with sound? Is that gonna be something that the landscaping plan deals with? Being this close to a busy road like that, it can be really loud.
Uh, that is correct. Uh, I've gotta take and locate your landscaping, uh, ordinance and, uh, uh, and, and meet or exceed what you've got. Uh, but I agree with you that it's gonna be very loud along the, uh, uh, southern side of that property.
Anything more, Ryan?
No, thanks.
Okay. Any additional comments here from Commissioners? So, Mr. Marky, I'd suggest then you, uh, which I'm sure you will, just, uh, stay in touch with Nick, and, uh, you guys can sort of, uh, meet or, or talk, just to talk about these comments and make sure that when you're, when you're submitting the, the, the next round or the final draft of the site plan, some of these comments are, are taken into account. But, uh, Mr. Marky, thank you for, for, thank you for coming to the meeting tonight.
Uh, thank you, and I will definitely get with Nick and my engineer and make sure that we address the concerns that you've got.
Thanks so much. Okay, so let's move on. The second, uh, item under new business is the Mallory Building. And so this is again, it's just an introduction to a site plan, not final review. And Nick, again, you wanna lead us into this one? Yes, I'm setting up my notes here. Okay. You know what? Just one thing I forgot to say, and this is just, uh, something for the, for Mr. Marky. I, I did notice that, and this is maybe something you're not concerned about, but, um, there is a development down across from Hazlet Animal Hospital called Marsh Point. Uh, it's Marsh Point with an E. Yours, yours is Marsh Point without an E, but I just thought you should know that there is an apartment complex with the same name.
I, I, and I understand that, uh, uh, and recognize that. Uh, but, uh, but we don't have an E on the end. And, uh, 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 Nick wanted a name for the project, and so, uh, over a couple of beers, we decided on Marsh Point.
That's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
That is correct.
That sounds like, that sounds like a reasonable way to, uh, to, to, to figure out a name, I guess. Depending how many beers, right? Uh, but.
I don't want too many.
Okay. All right, Nick. All right. Thank you for that, Dan. It's, you know, the name's not too crazy, so it's probably they behave themselves. Um, so this is a long old M78, very far to the east, almost to the county line, uh, with Shaiwasi. This is an existing business that is currently along Coleman Road. And they are relocating to a larger facility. We do have Ron Mallory from the building, the Ron Mallory, uh, building here. And he can answer any questions as well. I was trying to scroll down to the plans here without my P F freezing. Um, so this would have both an office use and, uh, storage of, uh, I'm assuming it would be building materials, but would love to get some clarification on that. And, uh, excuse me, so I did have a, a discussion today, uh, with Dan about, uh, whether this would qualify as by right or special use. And I'm changing my tone a little bit. Um, I'm leaning towards special use now myself, but thankfully, uh, that shouldn't cause any hiccups in the process. So I have a couple of agency reviews in, but not all of them. Uh, again, nothing too terribly concerning. There is a county drain nearby, so that we'll be able to handle the storm water. And like I said, between myself and Ron, I think we can answer any questions that you guys have. Oh, and sorry, one last thing. We have some very nice renderings as well, like we did with, with, uh, the townhomes. That's, we do, and they're in the packet. So, Mr. Mallory, do you want to, uh, tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here?
Uh, sure. We're trying to relocate to a new facility. Um, we've been on Coleman Road, I think, in Bat Town for about 12 years now. Uh, the new building is the 15,500-square-foot pre-engineered metal building. Um, we're gonna dress it up a little bit with, and insulated panel, um, on the office portion. Uh, the building itself, the, it's got a 26-foot E. The office portion will be a two-story. You've got in front of you the, our site plan drawings by Kevs that includes the landscape plan, along with all our drainage setbacks, all those requirements. We also included the, uh, lighting, photometrics, and the signage in our package, along with the building, uh, plans that were done to 40%. We've got our land evaluation or our perk test approved and passed. Uh, we've got our M dot driveway permit in hand, steals on order and financing in place. So you guys are our next, uh, hurdle to get our site plan approval, so that we can go get a building permit and, uh, hopefully get started by May 1st. Uh, as far as what we are doing, we're gonna do the exact same thing we're doing over on Coleman Road. We run our construction business out of here, our office. Our office staff is, uh, four people. Uh, the warehouse portion, we call it a warehouse because we don't really have another name for it. It's where we put our scaffolding and our ladders, uh, build a cabinet or two, maybe, uh, our dump trailer or a flatbed trailer that we store inside. Uh, it's more than doubling our area that we have currently, uh, but just growth over 20 years in business, we need more space. And I would be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Mallory. Okay, let's open this up for, um, Commissioner comments. If no one else has anything, uh, Dan, I'll, I guess I can address what you and I had talked about earlier, and we have Bert here as well, so. Sure, yeah, you can go ahead. There is the office use, and then there's also the, the warehouse part, you know, again, for lack of a better term. What Ron just described, it sounds like that's storage of equipment. It's not mass storage of building materials by, by any means. So, you know, I, I, I'm not sure where we draw the line in terms of incidental, but that would make a difference as to whether this is a by right or a special use, because any type of warehousing under our ordinance requires a special use permit.
I would.
I don't know if you, uh.
Have the applicant describe better what he intends to store.
Um, yeah, it's really, I understand what you're saying. Uh, warehouse, shop, uh, there's no, there's no good delineation, but it's gonna be exactly what we do, uh, over on Coleman Road, which is exactly that. We store ladders, screws, fasteners, um, scaffolding, generators, uh, sump pumps, hand tools. Um, we've got basically all our tools that we use to build. Uh, we build primarily commercial construction, mostly steel, uh, metal studs. We do do a few homes, uh, but as far as a, a bunk of two-by-fours or a pallet of plywood, that doesn't happen. That gets shipped right to the job site. Our flatbed trailer, uh, right now has got material in it that's backed into our current warehouse, because it's supposed to rain tonight, uh, but other than that, uh, you know, there's no storage of vehicles, trailers, and just construction tools, but definitely not any warehousing of, um, building products.
Thank you for that. So Bert, does that help you? Because, uh, I mean, if I look at the ordinance, uh, it's still sort of, uh, not clear to me that, uh, a special use permit wouldn't be required here. I mean, I see, you know, in this section, I think it is section 6.04E, talks about automotive equipment, talks about hardware, plumbing, heating equipment and supplies, machinery and equipment. Uh, you know, there, there's no sense that I have that these are for commercial purposes necessarily. So it's, and I would say that some of, some of it, at least what, uh, Mr. Mallory had mentioned, falls in your, under these categories.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I agree, Dan. Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of, are we looking at a lumber storage facility, or are we looking at basically a contractor's, uh, operation? Sounds more like a contractor's operation to me.
I hope so. That's what we do every day.
Um, I, I don't have that ordinance pulled up in front of me, so I'm gonna try to get there. Nick, till us were, you were, uh, uh, a little gray, I guess, while I'm trying to get that up.
Well, I did, I didn't have full detail on what was being stored in there, for one thing. But also, you know, the intent of this building is, is the offices with the storage of the materials solely being, in my opinion, sort of incidental to the fact that they're contractors. And, you know, it doesn't sound like they're storing excess amounts of building materials or things like that. So that was where I was coming from. Um, from a timeline standpoint, it doesn't change anything one way or another. But in terms of how we, we proceed, it does. So, uh, I have this up. I'm happy to share my screen.
Uh, that would be up to the chair.
Yeah, you know, I think you can. Let's, let's try to resolve this so that the applicant has some clarity going forward here. Okay. It's right here, 6.04E wholesale truck terminals and warehousing of automotive equipment, dry goods and apparel, groceries and related products, raw farm products, except livestock, electrical goods, hardware, plumbing, heating, equipment and supplies, machinery and equipment, tobacco, tobacco and tobacco products, beer, wine and distilled alcoholic beverages, et cetera, et cetera. So I can see here, but, you know, ultimately, I would say that this determination is, is the zoning administrator's call. And we don't necessarily, I guess, need to make that determination tonight, but, um, we should soon. If we want the public hearing to be at the next meeting, then we do need to make that determination tonight, unfortunately. Um, we have a, a fortunate situation where our next meeting is not for three weeks. Um, so we don't run into that off-day issue. So if we did make that determination tonight that we needed a public hearing, I would still have time to send the notice to the newspaper and send out the mailings. Okay. So Bert, sorry to put you on the spot. What's your determination here? You want to stick with, uh, this as a special use permit?
Actually, I do, Dan, and the reason is, uh, I'm looking at electrical goods, hardware, plumbing, heating, equipment, and supplies. Nick, show me. I can't, I just tried to move your screen and I couldn't. Will you please move your screen to the permitted use section that you were looking at?
Yes, so this is uses permitted by rights. Sorry, I believe it was right. Talking about office establishments, general offices.
If it was just office establishments, I think you'd be correct. Just be a, a use permitted by right, but I think we have more than that here. So at this point, my determination is gonna need to be special use permit.
Okay. Great. Okay. Good to have that resolved. All right, so going back to Commissioner comments here. Are there other comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. Um, I mean, it's a fairly, uh, it's a, it's a complete packet, uh, Mr. Mallory. So, so thanks for, thanks for doing that. Um, and thanks for including all of those details, the lighting, the landscaping, and the signage, and all of that. It's appreciated. So, uh, again, uh, I would suggest that you talk with Nick a little bit, make sure that you understand the process of, of getting that special use permit underway, and then we can see you back here in about three weeks. So our next meeting is April 13th. That's three weeks from now. Uh, based on the speed with which I've already gotten some agency review comments, I feel confident that I'll have all of them by then. Is there any strong opposition to setting that public hearing date? I think we can go ahead and do that. Okay. I'll get started on those notices in the morning. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we can move on to, to old business. So this first under, item under old business is a public hearing uh, on the storage expansion on Coleman Road. So I'm gonna open up the public hearing at this time. And Nick, do you wanna tell us about the, uh, your, your report for this project? Yes, if I can get my computer to unfreeze here. So we have seen this before, and I believe we rectified the landscaping issue the last time this was before us. Um, this is the, uh, proposed expansion of the existing storage facility there. It's two, uh, climate-controlled buildings that will have, I believe, about 100 units in it. And these two, two new buildings are on the southwest corner of the property. There've been some ongoing lengthy discussion with the Drain Commissioners' office, as you'll see from the agency review comments in the staff report. Um, it sounds like most of those have been rectified or are well on their way to being rectified. But the recommendation that I received from the County Drain Commissioner, or excuse me, uh, John Morrison from the Drain Commissioners' office, is that, uh, we make sure that there are conditions in place, uh, to ensure that these things are fulfilled, uh, as recommended by, by their office. Aside from that, I don't think there was anything too terribly glaring in terms of, of agency feedback. And I did provide a recommendation. And I did provide a recommendation and provided some areas that we should include some, uh, conditions for approval.
And maybe you just, uh, it'd be okay, I think, since it's fairly short to, to go ahead and read through those, uh, recommendations, those conditions for approval?
Sure. So, uh, I, I'm not sure that I, I want these worded exactly like this. I just tried to provide some, some general content, but, uh, said that the applicant will make improvements and upgrades to the stormwater management system to remedy concerns raised by both the township engineer and the county drain commissioner's office. And those are detailed, uh, in the comments above that, and I'm happy to go into detail on those if you need me to. Uh, the second, uh, proposal was that the applicant must provide details on the existing vehicle storage on the property, uh, and ensure that there are no code violations related to such storage. Uh, that was a comment raised by the, uh, township engineer. Third being, uh, requirement that the applicant fulfills all conditions of approval before any building permits are issued, and then standard any other conditions that the planning commission recommends.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, we do have the applicant here, I believe.
Yes.
So it, and the applicant can add comments right now, uh, to any of the recommendations or any of the, the summary that Nick just provided. If not, we can go to public comment.
Hi, Oliver.
Yep. Good evening. Um, we're the architects of the project and the applicant. We don't really have anything to add at this time, but we're happy to take questions and provide any other information needed. Okay, thanks so much. All right, so let's open this up for public comment if there is any. Okay, not seeing any takers at this time. So commissioners.
And did you, did you explain to any of the public how to make comment?
Probably no. Um, do that quite routinely, but, um, so Taylor, you can go ahead and explain if they're on phones, how to, to make those public comments.
Um, it looks like the only person we have on a phone is George.
Oh, yeah, okay. Otherwise, if you are on Zoom, you can raise your virtual hand, raise your real hand, uh, or otherwise indicate that you'd like to speak. Yes, Mr. Biskin.
Hi, uh, Brian from Powell Engineering. Uh, I would like to, uh, talk to you a little bit about what the Drain Commissioner said and, uh, my correspondence with them and the engineer regarding the drainage.
Great.
Could I, could I get a document share?
Thank you, Ken.
You should be able to now.
Everybody see that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's real quick look at the, these are the plans that were supplied to me by John Morrison from the Drain Office, uh, that were approved back in two thousand five and two thousand six, somewhere in there, and they, they've got some of his notes on there. But, uh, the drainage system, um, to serve the original units was a, was a small basin up here that overflowed, ran down a swale into this larger basin. And, and this is a retention basin that didn't have an outlet, so it was made large and it's meant to evaporate or per, and or percolate water to get rid of it. There was an over, there's an emergency overflow right here on the west side. Uh, and that basin looks like that, well, and we'll go over that in a second, but pretty much looks like that. So this is the topo from this year. And what we spent some time talking about, and John went out and visited the site, was to inspect these two key aspects. Water is sitting in the basin at about an eight eighty-nine elevation, which is right around what, right around what it's supposed to store. So it's holding water at the, at the top of what it was designed to store. The emergency overflow here, that, that's, that's just due to the topo, but it's kind of a rocky overflow there, and it has washed out a little bit. Uh, but it's holding back the water at a nine, at eight ninety, eight eighty-nine. And, um, it doesn't appear to be causing a lot of water damage, and it doesn't appear to overflow that often, according to, according to John. I, I was not there, and there's a lot of vegetation on this, on this berm side. So what we've done, uh, for our additional two buildings and pavement is, uh, this plan, these calculations and details were worked out with John, uh, and the township engineer to do a couple of different things. The additional drainage that we are generating by rehabilitating the berm along this side here, installing a new spillway will more than accommodate our additional drainage by two times. So by raising the b, the berm up a little bit, we're able to more than accommodate our drainage, uh, almost twice as much. And so by doing that, that will rehabilitate this key point of the basin and help protect the people to the west. Ultimately is what we're trying to do. Uh, John wanted the basin cleaned out down to, or the fact that it's holding water means it may, it may hold a great deal of water, but it's, it could be sedimented in. But, uh, John has required that the basin be cleaned out, uh, down to its original design elevation, uh, which is a perfectly reasonable, acceptable, and frankly, it was anticipated expectation. So we're going to rehabilitate the basin to its original design volume. We're going to fix up the berm. One of the requirements that John had was that we remove all of the rooted trees, most of them are real small, along the berm, because that's kind of what caused the berm to fail. The roots create water channels and it will eventually wash out. So we'll rehabilitate this ba, the berm back to where it was, clean out the basin back to its original design elevation. And then within our storm drainage system, uh, because, uh, because of our soil borings, we had four soil borings at the ends of each, each of the buildings. There's a, there's a large formation of sand. So we're going to convert this, our storm sewer line, lines went in this configuration to pick up the water and then to the basin. What we're going to do here is we're going to convert a solid storm line to a perforated line, uh, ninety-two feet of perforated pipe in a four by four stone trench connected to the sand. And we will, see that I have the detail on here, I don't. But the, the elevation of the pipe will be an eight eighty-nine, and the elevation of the outgoing pipe will be eight ninety, so we're going to hold water back to a minimum of a foot. And that will cause nearly all the stor, all normal, uh, storms. We'll say, uh, five to ten year frequency storms will be percolated into the ground and won't even go to the basin. Uh, and then, uh, it's some of the larger ones, if, if it gets overwhelmed, will then eventually go to the basin. This was something that John and I talked about, he's not requiring, but, um, I think it's a fair mitigation to help, help that basin last even longer and, and take, take advantage of the fact that we do have a sandy site. And when we clean out the basin, hopefully we'll expose some of that sand as well. So, uh, that is what, uh, John and I worked on, and the township engineer was, you know, part of that correspondence, and he had some questions, and, uh, I was able to answer those. So those are the things that we're going to do to rehabilitate that basin and try to minimize the amount of water going to it. And if you have any questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer them about the basin.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments for Mr. Biskin? So there is a couple of comments here that I just want maybe clarification on, and maybe you, uh, address this, but I, and perhaps I missed it. So there was a comment by the township engineer that there should be, uh, it should be noted where the dredge material will, will be put, and I don't know if you said that, maybe you did.
Oh, um, it will have to be removed from the site, uh, where it can't be spread, uh, as far as spoils. It's just going to be a, it, it, it's not going to be like a waste product at all, but it may have to be taken from the site if it can't be spread out on the site. That is not determined at the, at this time, really, we don't really know. That'll be something we would work out with the contractor. But we can certainly communicate that to the township and work with the township on that.
Okay. And the other issue is just, uh, I mean, you have addressed this, but the, the spillway to the west, it's still there out of the retention pond, but you increased the volume of the retention pond, and you've sort of minim, minimized flow into it. And so did, in your conversations with the township engineer, did he feel this was sufficient to, to address any adverse effects on the property owner to the west, satisfied that these, these would do the trick?
He did. He didn't say those words exactly, but he stopped, uh, asking me questions via email. And, uh, so I think, I think I answered him. We're, we're really taking the basin back to the, to the way it's been for sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years. And, um, I'm trying to percolate as much of the water as I can, so it doesn't even go in there. But currently, it's a, if you want to say, if you want to, um, characterize it as its potential for nuisance, right now it's at its peak time to possibly be a nuisance by rehabilitating the b, the berm and dredging it out. That is normal retention basin type of maintenance that's finally getting done here about fifteen years later. So it'll be back to working, uh, to the point that, uh, no water will dribble out of it to the west.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, maybe last chance for comment, questions? Okay, not seeing any, so I'm going to close the public hearing. So before us, we have a recommendation by, uh, Nick to approve the project. We've got a few, uh, conditions. I haven't heard any conditions, uh, proposed by planning commissioners. Are there any sort of, uh, revisions to the conditions as Nick has submitted? And if not, um, I would propose that we put this to a vote, since we have no public comment as well. John?
I think the engineers have done an excellent job on this basin rehabilitation. I'm glad to see you're being real proactive. I would support the project. If you're looking for a motion, Dan, I'll, I'll make that a motion.
I'll support it. Okay, so we, and, and that's a motion to approve the, uh, site plan as submitted with the conditions of staff.
Correct.
Okay. And we have a motion, we have a second.
The special use permit as well, correct?
Okay, thank you, yes. Site plan and special use permit. Jason, are you, are you supporting the motion?
That's motion, yes.
Okay, is there further discussion on this issue? Okay, seeing none, uh, let's put it to the vote. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And oppose the same sign? Okay, and the motion carries.
Thank you very much, planning commission.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for, for clarifying that. Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
I was just going to say, um, you know, Brian and Kevin and Mary Kate, um, next step is this would go to the township board, and they'll make their determination on the special use permit. But in, in my time here, I've not seen an instance where they have disagreed with the planning commission.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. You guys are very, very, uh, good to work with.
Thank you.
Great. It's good to hear.
Have a good evening.
All right, so let's move on. The second item under old business is the adult use marijuana, and so, uh, we've got the, the ordinance in front of us. We've got some changes beyond just the competitive review criteria, text changes. And so Nick, you want to kind of walk us through that? And I know that, uh, Chris Patterson is also here, uh, on this issue, so we, we've got a lot of sort of firepower to kind of go through this. So Nick?
Yes, I think, I think with everyone here, we can probably hammer this out pretty well. So I'm sure you'll see there are a handful of changes that were made, both to the, uh, scoring criteria as well as the other language within the ordinance. Um, before that, I had provided just the one page out of the, uh, Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, uh, that points out language about the competitive process. You know, as you'll see there, it's pretty broad, uh, but it does state that there needs to be a competitive process if the number of, of permits is limited. So I believe that I included, yes, I did, the, the track changes. I'm glad that those kept in converting that to a PDF. Everything in red is language that's been tweaked. I've had a couple of you ask about how much language related to the actual process we want in there, and I'm assuming that that will be a discussion. Aside from that, we added language just stating that applications would not be considered received until the closing date of the application period, uh, as set by the township superintendent. Uh, also added a sentence providing clarification that renewal applications are not subject to competitive review. There's, there's no reason for that. And then the actual application process, uh, language has been overhauled just to provide some clarity as to what that process is and what the competitive factors are. And as you'll see, the, uh, competitive criteria were reorganized by those high, medium and low, uh, priorities that were drawn, uh, by the planning commission last time.
Okay, thanks, Nick. All right, so let's, uh, we can open this up for discussion, and again, we have, uh, township attorney here, Chris Patterson, to clarify any of the language. I, I guess I can start us off. I just had a question, uh, under the application process. Well, this is a bigger question, I think. Uh, my, my understanding is that some, some townships sort of, not quite as detailed in describing that application process, that essentially it can be determined by the, the township superintendent, and there may be some benefits to that approach. You know, with a little bit more flexibility, uh, in determining that process and changes to it, uh, maybe adaptive changes. But in the, in the process as described, we have, um, applications being accepted once per calendar year. I'm curious, curious why that would be if we have no permits available in the township? If there's only one permit and one is taken, why would we have an application process every year? So either Nick or maybe Mr. Patterson. Uh, you are a, we don't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
With respect to the, um, detail that's in the actual procedures, the, the procedures, the way that we laid them out is kind of twofold. So we wanted to provide enough detail that if you thought, one, this would give you a direction of maybe how you might accomplish it. Two, we wanted to provide kind of a complete ordinance that it's easier to remove stuff instead of come here and decide that, um, we liked the idea of having more detail, and we had only provided kind of just a general delegation to the superintendent. So I think both of those were discussed at a staff level, as far as should we have this level of detail? Or should we really just, um, provide it to the superintendent to put that process in place as administrative process? From our perspective, we don't have, um, any, any issue with going in either direction. And I think the one thing that we would just, we added as kind of thinking about that model, if we want to take out some of the detail and rely on the superintendent, um, just some provision that would indicate that that process would be completed or provided as notice to the applicants before that four week window. So we don't really have an, uh, an issue other than saying, look, if we do do it that way, let's just make, we just want to make sure that all that, any applicants applying at the time would know what the process looks like before we accept the applicants. We wouldn't want to really do it after the fact. So we're totally comfortable with either of those. There, I don't know if you want to address the hand that's raised before I move on to the other two items that you raised, or?
So, yeah, so maybe so, Jason.
So I, I, I guess, uh, Mr. Patterson, in your, uh, opinion, I, are there changes to the ordinance, uh, that you feel are necessary in order for this ordinance to be complete from the original that was delivered to you a few weeks ago?
So the value of this is two, I think there's two important items that are really captured in the amendments. The first one is the fact that in the prior set of ordinances, you could go forward. There wasn't like a process, a process or a pathway clearly set forward for an applicant. So you kind of could come at it from maybe one of three angles. You could have somebody coming at it from a zoning perspective and they got to kind of figure out. The applicant is kind of stuck in this position of going through the zoning process first, then figuring out how they're going to pick up in the police power process. Going through the police power process first, then going through the zoning process. Um, and then of course, some hybrid approach of coming in, filing all the applications at once. So that also potentially has headaches that could be created for the township itself. And thinking about these different applicants and their perspective of how they would go about it, especially as it relates to the township's position that it wants to limit retailers to a very limited number. So it, it creates some confusion if we potentially have applicants coming at the process from various angles. So, so this does create that path so that everybody's going through the same path. And we can specifically have a process that does allocate if there is literally going to be only uh, one license offered, that it does allow a straightforward path for the, the allocation and approval of that license.
So couldn't those?
And I think the second part. So what, one other thing too, the second part that's captured. Um, originally in the set of ordinances that we provided, of course, there wouldn't have been limit numbers set. When we have provided the model ordinances, probably a year and a half or two years, whatever, whenever it was, the original models were provided. There would have been, um, blanks that were provided as the number of establishments. And then once those get filled in, there was language in there that said, look, if there becomes a situation where there's a limited number of licenses available, but somebody would otherwise qualify under a specific section of MRTMA where it's really that cap that's limiting the ability for licenses to issue. The general position is that we should have some type of competitive review process in place. The previous language said, look, if we end up in this situation because of whatever maximum license limits are set above, we will kind of develop and, and apply this. And so in the process of putting the path forward, we just said, look, we now know what that number is that's been put in the height. And like, it's likely that we are going to have to engage in competitive review. And so we just, it no longer was a permissive suggestion that, look, we'll design this after the fact. Instead, um, those red lines would, uh, basically boil it right into the process. And when it becomes effective, it's there and it's known to everybody.
So couldn't both of those points be handled through staff documentation and not be embedded in that ordinance?
Well, the competitive review factors, the way it was originally worded, I, I believe would have still left it to the discretion of the board to come back and nail down what exactly would have been the factors that would have been applied in a competitive review situation. Because if I remember correctly, the original language said, uh, using this competitive review process, including but not limited to considering these following factors. Like nothing was specifically established in stone and nothing was specifically delegated to like the superintendent's position or the planning director or somebody else who we would want to be able to roll that information out. So there was just ambiguity there as far as, to me, it would have still been a township board obligation if we would have ended up with a competitive review situation to establish that. And I think, I mean, that's still what we're doing here, right? Cause it's an ordinance process that'll end up going through the township board level. We're just kind of front loading this decision. So that we're not in a position of having competing applications and then trying to think about how are we going to go through analyzing them?
Right, but I mean, just, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry to be insistent here, but I, I mean, couldn't, I mean, again, couldn't that be handled outside of the ordinance language?
I think that it, so in part of developing the competitive review, could that be handled outside of the ordinance? Yes, I think the key would be delete the competitive review factors that are currently in your ordinance and delegate that to somebody to establish the competitive review process. Identify when you're going to establish that process and what would trigger the event that we would obligate ourselves to put it in place. And then I think you'd also want some parameters as to when that should be complete, right? I mean, someone needs to know what are those factors before they submit an application. It wouldn't be fair to kind of submit those competitive factors and then, or submit an application and then come up with the competitive factors that they would be subject to. So I think to answer your question, it'd still be in the ordinance, but could you basically just define the parameters about kind of the reasonable time and manner upon which somebody will establish this? Yes, you could do that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and Jason, I mean, I, so you thought about this a little bit, any preference for? So right now, at least the draft of force, we're leaning towards, you know, very great specificity in how that process unfolds, right? And so, you know, the alternative then, as I hear it, is just to, from our original ordinance, delete mention of the competitive review criteria, but specifying in more detail, you know, how that process will unfold, but giving discretion to the superintendent.
I mean, my, my opinion is, is that the ordinance change process is lengthy and somewhat of an ordeal. Uh, and that's, it would be, it seems to be a little bit more streamlined to put as much into staff hands in terms of making adjustments, I, as possible. I, and so I, I'm just, there's that. And then, you know, in terms of the process of how this unfolded in terms of changes to the ordinance language after being passed from the planning commission and approved for first reading on the board, I have concerns about.
Okay.
So then also to address.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to speak to your other comments. So the, uh, the four, the four week window. And then I think also, what about the fact that, why would you do it annually? And then why would you do it every year? So you got to read the, the four week window part was a discussion indicating that if we, well, the once a year, if we didn't put something once a year, we just wanted to make sure that if there were available permits, the way that MRTMA reads, nobody would suggest to us that we were avoiding our statutory obligations to at least, if there were available permits, allow some type of application process annually to go through that review. Now, somebody mentioned it, well, what about the fact if there are no available permits? The way that you, you read the one A and then you also read one B, if you read those together, one A says that the township shall only accept applications as designated by the superintendent. The date and times and places to accept shall be set, and then the superintendent shall accept applications at least once per calendar year. The intent of that language, um, and we certainly can make this even more clear, but was that if there were no available permits, they would not, you know, the superintendent would not designate applications to be received. Um, but we at least wanted somebody to think about it annually, so that if there were available permits that were sitting there, that, that four week process could be done. And again, if you want to handle this administratively, uh, you can handle it administratively. I think really the two keys that we tried to focus on, and then of course, we were developing a process for you to consider is one, making sure that we did have a pathway, because now if you're going to have one license issue, we just want to make sure we don't end up with a competing situation of people coming from the process at two different ways. So if you look at the zoning amendment that we provided, the zoning amendment kind of has a consistent integration of this police power ordinance by indicating that one of the requirements for the special use is to have received this prequalification. And then relating to that, of course, as well, is then just the, the discussion that we already had related to the compliance factors.
Right, okay. Jason?
I, I think I just tacking on to that side, my understanding is that, uh, the board, uh, uh, can by resolution change the number of, uh, facilities. And so without adjusting the ordinance language, I, I, we can, the board can, uh, increase that number. And then, uh, we wouldn't have to worry about the application window language.
So you can do that. The issue you run into is twofold. One, that the ordinance would become effective before, from, for practical reasons. You would probably get a resolution adopted, changing the limits of the licenses. So you have a window of time where you probably still need to remain concerned. And then two, of course, you would have to wonder in the resolution that you would adopt, changing the maximum limits. How high of those maximum limit, like how high does that maximum limit go to the extent that it still doesn't create a competitive filing situation? Like if you go from one to two or one to three, based on the meetings that I have attended, you may still have a situation where you're applying competitive review factors. So, um, I think if you went to unlimited, like what's listed for some of the other types, then I agree with you. I think that the separation distances and available parcels are probably going to basically work itself out.
John?
I got a couple of questions and maybe I'm off base here, but if we embed the criteria for, uh, evaluation in the ordinance, if we find that these factors that we've chosen are not accomplishing the goal we want, we're going to have to modify the ordinance in order to change those. And I, I'm a little reluctant to think that we want to go down that road. The other thing is the board made it very clear that this evaluation was going to be in the planning commission's, uh, agenda and privy. So are we saying that the planning commission's not going to do this? We're going to kick it to staff instead? And if that's, we need to clear that with the board.
So that, that wasn't my understanding, but maybe I'm misremembering about who would sort of implement or who would undertake the, you know, the competitive review process. I mean, I know they, they kicked it to us to think about the criteria, but I'm not sure who actually implements the review process. And I didn't think that they had, uh, suggested the planning commission do that. So Ryan?
Well, that's, that's correct, but, but we, at some point, we need to evaluate is the criteria that we're evaluating accomplishing the objective that we want.
And I would. We definitely could be part of that conversation, yes.
Right, I assume.
Ryan, you had a.
Yeah, I can only speak for myself, not the rest of the board, but there's some other board members here who can certainly tell you what they thought. But the fact that the criteria was already embedded within the ordinance was the reason that I thought the planning commission should revisit the, the process. But now that we're looking to crack open the ordinance and make edits, I, I don't feel as strongly about that at all. I think the staff should do that. And, and I've been very clear, I'm sort of dubious of the criteria we've laid out. So I would like to see some of it changed.
One other indication too, as far as the ordinance process, I guess, certainly as it would relate to, you can authorize yourself, just as you've done with respect to the limits, to use the resolution process on changing the max caps. I mean, you could also rely on a resolution process to institute some of these more detailed policy issues, if you would rather not have them set forth in the ordinance. Obviously, the ordinance amendment process, this is not the same as a zoning ordinance process, so it's a little bit more streamlined. But, uh, but I mean, you know, with a charter township, you do have to have two readings of it. You obviously are going to have to have some, some meeting or some work session to discuss what, what changes, as John pointed out. What are we not accomplishing with whatever we adopt? What would we then want to do to change it? So, um, if you wanted to streamline that, we could certainly change it to, uh, removing those items and providing like a resolution process if that would be more streamlined as well.
Okay, thanks. Karen?
Um, I just want to make a statement that there was nothing intended here to undermine the work that the planning commission has done over the last two years. What you did was valuable. Um, my only concern was that the clock starts ticking, um, once the ordinance was adopted. And I was concerned very much so that there was not a way in which to, um, parse out that competitive review process, um, for this. So the work that you did the last meeting was valuable, that you went through and, and said whether they were, um, you know, high priority, medium priority or low priority and how you wanted to score those items. Um, that's all in, um, I believe the police, um, part of the ordinance or the other ordinance. Um, so it's still valuable. Um, it wasn't my intention either to crack open the ordinance after sixty meetings, I think somebody said once, um, and try to rewrite the ordinance. It was, it was solely for the competitive review process. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, right. And I, and I do think that in the process of reviewing the competitive review criteria, uh, other comments were made. And so we thought, you know, we needed some, some, some greater detail or greater understanding of sort of some other elements of the ordinance. It sounds like to me though, at least I, I think I've heard from at least two or three people that there is some, um, preference here maybe for pulling the, the detail of the process and the competitive review criteria out of the ordinance. And giving discretion to the superintendent, but of course, you know, in some detail outside the ordinance specifying how that process is undertaken.
Yes, and so that's what I would, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Propose is that if that is done, I'm open to that. Um, that those criteria, that process would accompany the, um, the ordinance. Um, and, and, and possibly be approved by the board as well, so.
Yeah. Okay, but, uh, let's, let's hear from others if others have some comments on this. And we can still get into, uh, you know, the, the review criteria, um, understanding that if we pull it from the ordinance, this is sort of just advice to, uh, whoever finalizes those, that review process. Jason?
So what, what remains with, I, I designing the review process? I mean, a lot of the specificity is laid out here in the ordinance, and I'm assuming that would be reused for internal documents. I mean, I have no issues with any of the language in terms of what, you know, the specification of that, that level of detail.
Okay.
I think, uh, if it, if it parallels the sort of CIP scoring system, there is some additional detail that probably is required, right? But it's sort of, you know, putting these criteria to an actual metric, uh, which, a numerical metric, right? That, that you're actually scoring an application, which none of that detail is here. So maybe a scoring sheet, uh, accompanies this review criteria. Uh, and, and that I think would be probably sufficient to actually to do this.
Can, can we nail that scoring? I mean, if we model the CIP process application form with the same numerical sequence, I mean, do any of us have any issues with that?
I don't.
We might. Um, and I think that was the intent all along, right? That's kind of why we came up with these categories of high, medium, low. Because that's sort of, right, that models the CIP categories of weighting categories. Bert?
Well, you just said it. Rather than assign it, and then Chris could jump in here too, but rather than assigning it numbers, low, medium and high seems to make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think eventually you probably have to do something like provide a, 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 a metric, because you're, you know, you're, you're summing something at the end of this, right, to see whether, uh, you, you know, you're comparing applications, right? So just like the CIP, uh, there's a narrative about, you know, justifying why something is scored, uh, as it is. And then the weighting that each of those criteria are given is kind of what we did in this last meeting, right? The weighting is the low, medium and high. And then fleshing out the, the actual scoring element is something that follows quite easily, I think, from what we've already done. So, I mean, I, I don't know if, if there's a, an interest in getting into the criteria again. We've had two mentions in public comments about the one pertaining to some preference. And this is sort of a, a low weighted criteria, that those holding a commercial medical marijuana facility license, uh, that would, a, a low weight would be given in our review criteria. And I, so since it was raised twice with very different conclusions, uh, if planning commissioners have any comment on that, I, I can just say myself, I mean, when we, when early on, when we were talking about medical marijuana, uh, I think access was an issue that we talked about. Uh, and so, and frankly, I didn't think about that when we first reviewed these criteria. But if, if a facility is both, uh, a, a medical marijuana provider and an adult use provider, and you can provide that medical marijuana at a discount, given insurance, um, you know, I think there is a, there's some merit in that, but I'd be happy to hear from commissioners or from Mr. Patterson on that as well. I don't think there's anything prohibiting an establishment from holding both a medical marijuana license and an adult use and operating both functions simultaneously on the same, on the same, in the same business, so.
I, I just think to that latter point, well, two points. One, I think that the, uh, MRTMA, the adult use statute itself actually has a preference within a part of its own process related to, um, sort of turning to those who are already licensed under the MMFLA to, to, uh, be able to apply first under MRTMA. I think that since has now gone away. Um, then the other part with respect to your comment is, um, oh, I completely missed it. Oh, I know, co-location. So MRTMA itself also has, I mean, it's, they kind of have a legislative policy intent to co-locate to the extent that it's possible, um, and medical and adult use. And there are potentially some provisions that you could read that would, you know, we can't put an ordinance in, in place that would potentially restrict somebody who already has a medical marijuana facility from also having an adult use establishment. So I think the statute already has, the statute that was adopted already has some policy, um, perspective on both those comments.
Right. This criterion, however, it, it, it really is only that there's some preference, a low, low weighted. This criterion, however, it 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 really is only that there's some preference, a low, low weighted preference given to those holding the medical marijuana license, but not necessarily that they're exercising that license or utilizing that license in the proposed development. I mean, that's a maybe we're quibbling there, but you know, if we're thinking about access, it doesn't matter if they have a license and they're not exercising it, I guess. If I'm understanding this correctly.
I don't have the medical uh ordinance in front of me. Does it also have a provision like this does that it has to open and be functional in eighteen months?
It has it does have a similar build. It does have a similar timeline related to getting a final building operating. It doesn't have obviously the same detail because this has an application review process that was never developed then. So the timelines are good. It's going to read slightly different there. And I think um, that was a conversation that we had with township staff was at some point, you know, how exactly do we make those processes mirror each other, if at all? Do we leave it with somewhat of a different process? Just because we're trying to now integrate this competitive review process. But the conclusion was a lot of the focus has been on adult use. So let's not, you know, what we have has worked thus far for what we're doing with medical. There's no reason yet to maybe go back and revisit that. So let's see how this project works out. And and if these application process and these timelines work, then we can always go back. And that way, for purposes of a licensee, they know that the process is pretty consistent. I think that's what we normally hear with respect to municipalities is the licensees see the two different ordinances and they're they kind of get stuck on what are the the differences. So maybe at some point you'd want to revisit that. But for now, it's pretty consistent. It just wouldn't have this new application process and the new competitive review process, which might be another reason that you would want to base it on internal staff policy and a resolution provides a little bit more freedom to to make it align with what you're doing.
Jason?
I I know last time that, you know, I I I, you know, advocated for moving the uh that criterion for having a permit to operate a commercial medical marijuana facility to the lowest priority. Um, and that was under the assumption that this was anti-competitive. Uh, but I, you know, now that's this has been rebrought up. I mean, I think in terms of the values of our community, I mean, it I I do see that this is a little bit more, I I might be, we might want to weigh this a little bit more heavily than I I guess with the term standard uh importance.
Okay. Others have thoughts on this one?
I mean, I don't want to I don't want to blow things up, but you know, we're here and we're opening this thing up anyway. A a lot of the tension here is around the one permit. Is there any appetite to increase it to two permits? That would get rid of some of the built-in anti-competitiveness and still allow for the co-location, the prioritization of medical. I think ultimately those things are good. It might tussle with it is when it's one and you give priority to one, the likelihood that there's one remains uh and that that seems not where the spirit of what we want to do is.
Well, I don't want to speak on behalf of the planning commission, but you know, I I think generally we've always wanted to give discretion to the board to adjust the number of permits. Because, you know, given the, and this predates, I guess, your your second term on the on the Board of Trustees is that, you know, we we went into this issue quite conservatively, right? We had already turned down adult use at some point and uh and provisioning centers. And so we, as the planning commission, I tried to respect, I think, that sort of conservative approach to provisioning centers and adult use in the township. And so, I mean, the planning commission, obviously, you you commissioners are free to weigh in on whether we want to advise the Board of Trustees to increase the number of permits. But I think the Board of Trustees, I think ultimately that decision rests with them. My my own feelings. Jason?
So I I mean, I I did a little bit of searching today just because I am I, you know, the discussion about marijuana has been persistent I I I in the planning commission for some time. And I was curious as to how long we've been discussing this on a regular basis. Turns out that's from October twenty-four of two thousand seventeen uh that initiated the discussion. Um, now we discussed a variety of different things. I so this has been, and we've discussed marijuana approximately once, at least once a month. I I every month I since I two thousand seventeen. Now, we've done some things, you know, we did a a community survey. We did a community survey back, it's basically right about now, I back in two thousand eighteen, three years ago. And that was only on medical marijuana. And the results of that were approximately sixty percent of the population of those who responded to the survey I I wanted to buy into medical marijuana. I I uh but there was there was some hesitancy. I at that point, I we didn't want to I I to look like, you know, have these ugly cinder block buildings I in our community. We didn't want to look like South Cedar Street, for example. Um, and so while there was support for it, uh, there was also support for, you know, being conservative and uh starting off small. And so I majority of respondents said that's, you know, they wanted, I, you know, fewer than five I I provisioning centers. Um, and so I early discussions, I know Ray was a a vocal uh opponents uh for to us going through this. So we have this long history of trying to navigate this, um, trying to navigate this as stewards I of our community and I and and, you know, what our preferences are. And so, you know, that has infused this process I I from the beginning. Uh, we we still have no facility in our I in our township. And so, um, you know, my opinion, I as a transitioning planning commissioner as well as a township board member is that you know, we need to do due diligence on uh going slow with this and and testing it out I and figuring out what we need to change before we open up the door on additional facilities. You know, let's learn. And then then we can go back and and we can say to our community, we've we've learned from this process. And we improve the process so that we don't jeopardize our small town. We don't, you know, you know, we can alleviate their concerns. Uh, the other point that I'd like to make is um I increasing the number I of facilities is not a way of adjusting a fair competitive process. We adjust it to five. You know, the sixth applicant is going to say, well, this is not fair. Well, then we adjust it to six, then the seventh applicant. So it it that's it's not an argument for competitive process. Competitive process are these criteria and how we review those. And that's that's the part that's, you know, I I think. So I I I do believe we have a fair uh process and we're doing this conservatively. I I also am confident that I I, you know, after we learn and we review, you know, I, you know, the past year, I a year from now, you know, I think we're going to have a productive conversation about what we need.
Thanks, Jason. Ryan?
I I've been confused about this issue that we're going to learn things over this process. What is it that we're expecting to learn? So I can understand that better.
Well, I don't.
Yeah, Karen, Karen, I think wanted to chime in here, but I've got some ideas too.
Yeah, I don't want to take away from Jason. I saw he was going to start speaking. Um, I think from a police perspective, we've talked about um whether or not there are higher incidents of crime, whether there are more calls. Um, I and I know that's just from sitting with Lyle. I know if there's any um, you know, matches complaints about smell or other issues. So I think some of them are environmental, some of them are a a toll on on people resources. So and and that's all I had. So Jason, please.
Yeah, thank you. I I met with Lyle last week for different purposes. We talked about this and his comment was he was glad how we restricted it. I, you know, from, you know, again, his perspective. But, you know, other things in terms of, well, the application process, the review process. Um, you know, I I I guarantee we're going to learn something there. I imagine the building department is going to learn about, you know, different types of equipments that's uh are going to be necessary. You know, what what are the nuisances out there in terms of, you know, I, you know, noise, uh smell, or even light nuisance? I mean, there's lots to learn from this process.
I mean, I appreciate all of that stuff, but you know, we're not inventing this in Bath Township. I mean, we can drive up the road and have answers to all of these questions. I don't know why we're pretending that things will be different here in Bath Township.
There's I think there's unique elements to Bath Township. I mean, one example would just be elements of the ordinance, right? So we have co-location uh requirements, right? Uh, and we have citing requirements that are unique to Bath Township and that are unique to our our ordinance, right? So I think we can learn from some of those elements as well.
But what do we learn when there's only one?
Well, I mean, you're never going to get to the point where you have a large end, if that's what you're thinking, uh, right?
No, but like what's the comparing contrast? Like the citing, we understand that this worked or this didn't, but there's only
Can I, can I? Who is jumping in here? I'm not seeing.
George, sorry.
George, George, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry to interrupt, but uh a lot of it too will be will determine how our how our community responds to it too, because we haven't really seen any of this transpiring in our in our community locally. To see how our residents, the older generation, and some of the other aspects of our our community are gonna how that's all going to flow in our community either.
I think I thought I saw another hand up. Is that, did I get that? John?
Uh, this is an interesting discussion, but the the one permit was the directive from the Board of Trustees. The planning commission does not have the uh ability nor the uh legality to establish the number of permits that are issued.
Well, that's where I started too. And and that is where, I mean, that was intentional that we wanted to, we we started with one, the planning commission, but the Board of Trustees is can can adjust that as they want. And it's not kicking this down the road to the Board of Trustees. I mean, that that was the intention all along was to to give the board, the elected body the means to adjust that as they see fit.
But if this group felt like there was a recommendation that they wanted to make for any other number, the board would certainly take that in high regard.
Absolutely. I think that's right. So we've heard from Jason, I think, and, you know, I tend to agree with Jason. Just given the history of this issue in the township, given the feedback that we've imperfect, right, the feedback that we've received, I think, starting slowly, starting conservatively, making sure we have a competitive process uh and 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 essentially see what happens. And if what happens is is positive overall for Bath Township, I think the trustees can can make adjustments.
I would argue that two is not progressive or liberal. Two is still, I would argue, very conservative.
I don't disagree. I think uh one uh we, I think one was a a number that the Board of Trustees, not this Board of Trustees, I think, had supported. If the if the new Board of Trustees has a different sense, uh, you know, go ahead. Uh, I think you can make those adjustments. But I think uh when we originally started on this, uh, one was always, I think, the number that we had in mind here to start slowly. But things may have changed. Not only the Board of Trustees, but also, you know, the circumstances and the context as well. Ray?
A comment on the on conservative part, you know, there's an adjacent community that has come, they don't have any provisional centers. They haven't allowed any yet. Comments I've heard from them is is that, okay, the residents voted for recreational marijuana. That didn't mean they wanted a provisional center in their township. And so they haven't allowed any yet. And they're apparently going to go through a quite extensive uh public information or trying to get public comments on people. Do they want these things in the township at all? So they're going really conservative compared to us. They're not allowing any. So I I think the thing is is that we're starting with one, which I think is a good idea. See how that goes. Maybe the residents are going to say, well, that's great. Let's have three or four. But uh, we've got enough provisioning centers in our community to the south of us, East Lansing, that maybe we don't need any at all. That's always been my position. And another comment I've heard from somebody is that they have a hard time saying that drug and recreational in the same sentence. Recreational drugs just doesn't fit together. And I think there's, I don't know how many people feel that way, but that's kind of, I know Jason mentioned before, I've never been in favor of this recreational marijuana anyway. And that's one of the reasons why. It's a kind of a gateway to, could be a gateway to wish things.
Joel?
Having not been around for the earlier discussions about this, I mean, I hearing Ray talk to, and and I've known Ray, I'm good to see you again. I haven't seen you in ages. Um, I mean, I I think that ship has sailed, right? I mean, me personally, I think that uh you know, this gateway conversation has been come and gone. And the people of the country, not just in Michigan, are more and more making a decision that this is something that should be regulated and and allowed, you know. So how we get there is the question. I guess I don't know how we got this on our agenda. If uh if the township board has limited the the planning or the the community to one facility, then really what we should be talking about is the criteria of which we grade those people, you know, the the applicants. So we're kind of all over the board here, and I'm a little confused, but um, you know, I I think we should limit our discussion to what uh criteria we're going to use to to grade the applicants and not get into kind of the social aspect of all of this, because, you know, there are varying, it's a generational issue too, you know. So some older folks really don't want any of this in our township. Other younger folks probably think, what's the big deal? Um, I think if we regulate it smartly and safely, that's about the best we could hope for.
My sense, Joel, is that people are hoping then that maybe this is the last that we talk about uh marijuana on the planning commission for a while. And so they're getting any last comments that they possibly can before it leaves us forever.
Sure. And I I haven't been privy to all those, so I I I hear you.
I do, I do. Jason, you had your hand up. Dan? Okay, Ray, and then we'll go to Jason. Yeah.
Your first question, one of your first questions was, and that's one of the ones I had written down, is that in section four, one B, having a permit application at least once a year, I don't think that question has been answered yet. I think we got to add into some some that that will happen once a year if there are permits available. If there's no permits available, why have an application process?
Yes. Well, I think Mr. Patterson, you know, he said that he could probably uh clarify the language, but you know, I I guess I was persuaded that the 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 whatever the A uh uh was that preceded B basically said that it was the discretion of the superintendent, whether or not uh, I I forget the language, but to engage. And so it almost triggers uh, or is it B is conditional on A uh is the way I kind of understand that. But we could surely uh clarify that language, I guess, if there's still some confusion there. Uh, Mr. Patterson, you want to comment, but I and I don't want to speak for you.
The I, that was exactly what I indicated. So I I think it was captured, but I do agree that that certainly uh to clarify the issue for Ray, we can add a add a sentence from a threshold matter. Um, there was discussion, however, whether or not we would even have all this detail in the ordinance. And and instead, we would kind of go from the perspective of saying, looks like everybody from an initial glance says, look, we think this process could work or will work, at least from an initial attempt, and that we would maybe remove that detail, delegate, I guess, maybe in a list an official or designate kind of how we're going to come up with this process, but then otherwise leave it at that. I mean, I was making notes just related to that discussion. I think if we have the, if we're going to keep the language in the ordinance, we certainly should discuss it to the to the detail necessary to make sure we get it right. And I think we can, to raise point, clarify that, and we can make sure that we've got the right ordinance language when we leave. From a from a high level view, if we are going to delegate it to somebody, I think that, I mean, the important part is just to make sure that we can control when applications are received. And somehow we end up with ordinance language that even if we delegate to the superintendent, I mean, Karen, she freely volunteered, from what I heard, that she'd be willing to accept that that. So I think if we delegate to the superintendent, we still want some language that we can design and put in here at the planning commission's recommendation that would clearly indicate that, look, until that process is established and some action is undertaken by the superintendent, assuming this ordinance is adopted, that application window would open. I mean, that's that would be our biggest concern. We just don't want with respect to limited licensing, getting applications and not being ready. I mean, that's, that would be our biggest concern. We just don't want with respect to limited licensing, getting applications and not being ready. Um, and then I think we, the only other items, you know, a lot of this could be removed. Um, but we would just wanna maintain the language, at least indicating that the general pathway is some type of, it doesn't, and you don't have to use this language, but an idea that there's a, as we've proposed it, a pathway through the police power ordinance to the zoning approval process back to the, to, to a final issuance. And if there's the interest and discussion on the background of why that pathway was, and there are a lot of ways, right? You could go zoning first. I mean, if you wanna discuss why that was chosen from a general perspective, we can have that discussion as well. But those would probably be the two things I think we could just crystallize in here. The rest would be removed, and essentially you'll probably see it. But it would be in a different form. It would be as a, as a township policy that used to uh provide for the process. And then I think on that same kind of threshold discussion about whether or not we retain the competitive review process as it's provided herein, based on the discussion, we would, we could basically revert back to the language that you had. And that's down, it looks, so like it's down in, on page like fifteen or sixteen of my version. Fourteen it starts, uh, we, we would basically revert back to that. And then it indicated very generally that the township would arrive at that. I think we could indicate again, oh, some language that prior to the acceptance of any applications, the Township Superintendent um, would engage in developing the competitive review process, subject to inclusion of the following, you know, in, including and considering the following factors. Then we just list all of those items that you had all discussed and listed before. And whether or not you still want them listed in categories as high, medium, or low, we could maintain that, or we could remove that and just completely revert to the prior language.
Yeah. So I, and eventually I wanna loop back to the big question here, is whether we're gonna do this, you know, with it detailed in the ordinance or by resolution. And I think I, I have some understanding of what the preference is here. But I mean, I would suggest then that if we go the route where we're gonna delegate this to the superintendent, I, I don't think we need to list the criteria or the categories or the weightings. I think all of that, this is valuable work that we did, and that may be maintained in whatever policy document comes from it. But I don't believe it needs to be in the ordinance for the reasons that, you know, others have specified, is that the ordinance change process is a sort of burdensome. Uh, and, and I think it'd be easier and just as effective if we pull this out and put this into a policy document. But Jason, uh, you had, I think you had a hand up, but maybe that is, that moment has passed. I don't know.
That moment has passed.
All right, all right. So I am, uh, I mean, I'm suggesting that this then uh be modified. And we turn this over to the superintendent and modify the ordinance such that that is clear, that there's some specification about how that process is undertaken, but the details are fleshed out in some township policy document, rather than in the ordinance. Karen?
Can I just verify that you're, you're indicating support for removing the eighteen criteria?
From the ordinance? I am, yeah. I mean, but I'm, I'm hope, happy to entertain arguments, but I think that should be removed. Uh, and you know, obviously it's gotta be detailed somewhere else, and before we have applications. But I would, I would support removing it from the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
I'd support that also, Dan.
Okay, great. And I think Ray, is he your hand?
Yeah, I, I would too. I think, I think having it be a separate policy document is much better than having it in the ordinance. I did have one other question. I don't know where it goes, where it goes in the ordinance or in the, but on uh page twelve, it's section four, six D, it's, one is added conditional approval. I didn't understand exactly what that meant. Says a renewal application is required from any applicant who receive conditional approval, even if a permit has not yet been issued. So I'm confused by that.
So when we added the new pathway, the path was again to go get a conditional approval. So we're gonna take a first glance at applications and say, yes, you know, you've met the general substance of what the ordinance requires. If there is enough applications that we would have to do the competitive review process, the competitive review process would happen. Eventually, we would arrive at who are the individuals who received that conditional approval or that pre-qualification. They would go on to zoning, correct? If you look at the zoning section that was established, the zoning section has certain timelines in it that could run past the actual renewal process for a license. So what that language did is it just clarified any ambiguity, that if you're sitting in the middle of that process and you run through um, the renewal app, application, this would indicate the requirement that you would still have to complete a renewal application to stay in line, to complete that zoning process. If it wasn't completed within, you know, the twelve months of the, the conditional approval.
Thank you.
We, we only put it in there, I mean, we didn't wanna go and start modifying a lot of stuff in the renewal process, obviously, to, to get this general pathway put in there. And there's a lot of different ways that you could do that. If somebody is sitting in, in the zoning process, and again, this is all gonna be developed from a policy in a different document now, but certainly, um, that would have to be removed. Based on like, that this general idea that we're gonna make it a policy document. And so they could essentially not be subject, until they get a actual permit, they're not gonna pay any renewal fees, right? They're gonna be in the middle of this process, working towards getting a final approval. So we just put it in there so we didn't create any type of ambiguity with what was being proposed.
Okay, uh, Ryan?
So I too would support taking it out of the ordinance. Uh, just so I understand, would that leave section four number one in its entirety?
It would leave a modified portion of section four, one.
All right. My, my suggestion, there's a missing word in A. I think we're missing the word by the superintendent. And then my recommendation for B would to be say something like thirty calendar days rather than four weeks. It's slightly ambiguous.
Sure. Yep. But we, but we agree that that's gonna end up being placed in the policy document.
Okay, thanks.
Ultimately, what would be left of, there still will be an application process, so four one with the heading is going to exist. And it's basically gonna have lang, language that's gonna capture the fact that we're not receiving applications until a process has been established. The process is delegated to be to the superintendent, et cetera. We're just preserving that stopgap to make sure we can control applications. The rest of it is then gonna go in a different document and, and
So it sounds like we have some agreement on where this is headed. So I guess the question is, does, does the Planning Commission want to see that pared down ordinance? Uh, the, it's gonna significantly sort of uh remove some of this text, uh, simplify it greatly. But does the Planning Commission want to see that we hope revised and final ordinance for sending it back to the Board of Trustees? Jason?
I, I would argue that's, I mean, largely it will be the same documents that has already been forwarded to the Board of Trustees. So I would, I would feel comfortable having to just send straight to the Board of Trustees.
I agree.
I'm fine with that. I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna, they're gonna remove the competitive review criteria, right? And then I think they're gonna clarify that, as, as Mr. Patterson said, you know, uh, the application process and how it's delegated to the superintendent. But I would agree. I, I'm comfortable with that, if, if you commissioners are as well.
I am.
Okay.
Me too.
All right. All right. So it sounds like everyone's on the same page. Um, I don't think we need a vote here. Um, my understanding, or maybe we do to, this, to be safe, let's uh have a vote to sort of forward uh, the, the editing process to staff and then eventually to the Board of Trustees.
Did you make a motion or do you need a motion?
I need a motion. I'm not sure what I said, or if I said it well, but yeah, I need some kind of motion, Joel.
I, I, I would move to send it back to the township, but I guess I'm a little fuzzy on what we're asking for as well, but.
I think you're looking for, uh, you'd wanna move to send it to township staff with the recommendations of the Planning Commission for a subsequent revision, and then take it to the Township Board for review.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Is there support?
I'll second that.
John, John, support any first question? Okay, I'm in favor of the motion. Say, say aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. Okay, so the motion carries. And so I, I, I should add to, uh, Karen or Ryan and/or Jason. I mean, the Planning Commission, of course, is at your disposal if you want help in that policy document. Uh, you know, we're, we're happy to look at it again, probably not as part of the ordinance, of course, but happy to help with that as well. Okay.
No, and if I may, Chris and I will work towards having this um to the board for the um April fifth meeting. So, just so you're aware.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, and thanks, everyone. Thanks, uh, Mr. Patterson for, for attending the meeting tonight. It was, it was helpful. Um, and so let's move to the last item under new business, which is our landscaping ordinance. All right, so Nick, back to you.
All right, let's talk about this now that everybody's brain is good and fried. Uh, I thought that was a very good discussion, and I, I think good conclusions were reached. So thank everybody for working with us on going through that process. Um, so the landscape ordinance is still a little rough. I'll absolutely admit to that. Um, there are some edits in here that Ray had made that are in red, I believe. Um, and then I had highlighted language I had added. Um, you know, when I had essentially been given this back from the Planning Commission, I mean, it's been, I wanna say about six weeks at this point. And there have been quite a few things that kind of took over my time. Uh, admittedly, in, in related to the uh, the broadband uh task force and getting that up and running, and then dealing with a handful of other issues as well, uh, comprehensive plan and marijuana ordinance and whatnot. So uh, I still think we have a little bit of work to do. Um, I had a good conversation actually with um Andrea Palverento, the Planning Director for Watertown Township. Um, oddly enough, because they were also in the process of updating their landscape ordinance. And so uh, I, I think Andrea, for that conversation and that feedback, um, a lot of this language is, is quite similar to what they use. Um, essentially relating to maintenance of that landscape. Um, you know, requirement about a certain percentage of the landscaping being native plantings. Um, excuse me. Uh, initially I had considered putting sort of these approved native species in the ordinance, but along a similar line to what we just talked about with the marijuana ordinance, I don't think that's necessary. I think that's something that we can put general language in there. Um, and you know, a, a variety of different sources could be approved for what is or isn't a native plant. Um, there had also been some discussion about when it was appropriate to uh, replant or replace a dead or damaged piece of landscaping. Um, as it relates to time of year, uh, obviously certain plants do better certain times of the year when they're planted. So there's language in there essentially stating that, uh, you know, if there are weather or uh climate conditions that don't make it appropriate, uh, that that can be pushed off. Uh, Watertown actually had gone so far as to include language about an escrow uh, for development to ensure that it was sufficiently replaced. I did include that language, but I'm, I'm certainly not married to it. Um, but in general, just wanted to cover those issues and then open this back up for discussion. Uh, and, and last thing, we haven't had a public hearing on this yet. I'd really like to hear from the public if there's any feedback on this. And of course, the way we've written it is this would only apply to uh multifamily, commercial office and industrial uses. This wouldn't apply to single-family homes, uh, just in case there's any ambiguity about that. But uh, I'll leave it there and open it up for questions, comments, feedback.
All right, thanks, Nick. Okay, so I've got a few comments, but let's see what other commissioners might have to say about it, the draft so far.
I have a question.
Yeah, Joel.
It seems, yeah, I, I just heard um what Nick just said, this is a subject, not subject to residential homes, right?
That's right.
Okay, um, it, it seems to me the line between noxious weeds and wildflowers is pretty darn slim. Um, and I don't know uh if it would become a problem since it's not a residential issue, but uh, the noxious weed ordinance comes up pretty occasionally around here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a good comment. Uh, reference to weeds at all, I think, is, is pretty problematic, right? Uh, in my view, in my view at least.
No, I, I completely agree with you. That's a valid point. And something that we should look at a little bit more. Um, as it relates to just native plants, the way the language is currently written, it states that uh, all landscaping shall contain a minimum of seventy-five percent native species as determined by generally accepted sources and approved by the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator. Um, I've received a handful of those sources, but I know that for certain species, there's some debate. But there's also, uh, you know, some clarity as to what is and what isn't. Um, so if we wanted to look a little bit more into the noxious weed issue, I'm certainly not opposed to that. Because Joel, you're absolutely right, that comes up every summer.
I didn't really have any problem with the rest of it. Okay, thank you. Jason?
Um, I, 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 I mean, I wonder if we should have an agricultural exemption within this uh ordinance?
So can you talk a little bit more about what, what you're meaning by that? So?
Well, I, I mean, if, if, if a farm is going to do an improvement which would trigger this, are they gonna be beholden to the landscape I, I ordinance? Um, so I, I would have issues with that. Um, I, in particular, the, the tree spacing, so three thousand, for every three thousand square feet, uh, having a tree. And so,
Yeah, is this triggered in the rural district? It wouldn't be, would it? Isn't this, uh, isn't this pertain to particular districts, or is it pertain to particular uses?
So special provisions applies to all districts, zoning districts.
Okay, so maybe we need, need some clarification then.
So there's that. I, I, in terms of noxious weeds, for those of you who, you know, look at a noxious weed, I see like a, a medicinal and edible plant uh, in, in most cases. I, but I, I guess one question I have is, um, uh, this clause about a, a minimum of seventy-five percent native species. My understanding is that common uh lawn grasses, like Kentucky bluegrass, are not native uh species. So I, I, I think there's a, 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 a problem there. Um, I, and then I, I brought this up previously, but um, you know, my personal preference is, you know, we should be prioritizing uh edible landscapes. Uh, and so having, prioritizing fruit trees instead of pine trees, I would be my preference. But I, I, I don't have the sense that I have uh, uh, support uh among this group with that.
So the, there's flexibility to get to fruit trees, right? But you just want, y, y, your preference would be to specify that more clearly, rather than leave it open to evergreen and deciduous trees. Is that kind of where you were headed?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a larger issue here about, you know, in, ensuring that's, you know, there, that there's ample food supplies. I, um, so, and you know, making opportunities to support that, but I don't know if this is the place, time, or place for that.
Okay. I saw another hand, I believe.
I jump in real quick, Nick. Um, I, I just wanna hear from anyone else uh about grasses. Um, you know, personally, I, Jason, I know we talked about this earlier, and I, I agree with you in terms of making sure that um, we at least provide, provide some clarification. But are, are others under the impression that that's how that would be interpreted, that the grass would fall under that native landscapes requirement? Um, cause personally, I don't really think of grass in, in the traditional American lawn sense as being part of landscaping. But maybe that's just me.
I, I think it's, that's a fair interpretation, Jason's interpretation. I mean, I, my preference, I would definitely get rid of this, uh, this sentence about grass yards being planted with sod or seed. I mean, in my opinion, turf grass has absolutely almost no redeeming qualities. Uh, and so I, I think we ought to allow a little bit more creativity in uh, you know, ground covers. And I definitely don't wanna mandate sod or seed or turf grass, in my view.
There's some very nice native grasses that would, I mean, if we could push for them to be planted as part of this, I would be fully supportive of that. We could have a uh, landscape.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, and the other, the other way to look at that, in my view, and this kind of relates to architectural standards perhaps, is that i- it seems that it seems that, you know, we get into sort of shaky legal ground if we base our ordinance on aesthetic standards. And if I use that and filter it through a turf grass requirement, I don't know how in the world we justify mandating turf grass on a, and a welfare, health, or human safety kind of criterion. It doesn't work at all. And so the only reason we would do that is the sort of aesthetic standards or traditions of our communities. And in my view, I don't think it would stand.
Without really trying to twist some language, I'm generally inclined to agree with you.
I'm curious too about how, where the numbers, the sort of tree density numbers come from. I, I, I don't have a great sense for, you know, understanding or even kind of, you know, contextualizing sort of why so many trees per three thousand square feet or, you know, these sort of numbers. Did you use kind of the Waterton ordinance as a, as a model there?
That's B two, correct?
B two, yep.
Okay, so that was language that was from originally what Ray had provided. So Ray, maybe you can speak to that?
I think that came from Meridian's ordinance. It came from another ordinance somewhere. It needs to have some way to put something so we've got enough trees to make it make sense. But one tree per three thousand square feet of unpaved area, so that's not a lot of trees.
That was my sense too, but I just didn't have a good, you know, way to kind of visualize that probably either. Yeah. And then there's another, there's other language about, I guess it's under berms, planting on berms, and that's one shade tree for every thirty lineal feet. Which I guess if you're just talking about spacing between trees, that might make some sense, I guess. Is that kind of what the rationale there is? Sorry, that is under berms.
Three, I think.
Yep.
Because that depends what kind of trees you're putting in there, too.
Sure.
Because you're putting a deciduous tree that eventually is going to be eighty feet high, thirty feet may not be enough between them.
Right.
Don't we typically work that out with the developer during the planning stage as in a raised buffer yard type of situation? Of what, what type of tree they're going to plant and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Certainly have had those conversations.
Yeah, if you have a like use next to it, you wouldn't have to have a buffer yard necessarily. It depends on the zoning district. Because I know that it's few and far between, but for example, office uses in the medium-density residential. Trying to think whether or not the buffer yard requirement would apply, because if I'm recalling correctly, I think that applies to high-density and development, and the development district only. I'll double check on that real quick.
Jason?
I, item F, unobstructed site distance. I just wanted to point out that there's, section fifteen point zero eight discusses this already, which is on fences, walls, and screens. So I, I have no issue with having it twice. I would just double check that the requirements are the same.
Yeah, that's a good catch. Well, so we got a few suggestions here. And I don't want to cut short the conversation, but it sounds like it, it appears that it's drying up a little bit. So Nick, you have enough here, and we can work on this together a little bit, just comparing my notes to yours, but sorry, Ray, go ahead.
I stepped out for a minute. I don't have to talk about this enough, but way up in B one, there's an area that I highlighted way back there, says grass areas in the front yard of all non-residential uses shall be planted with sod. That came out of another ordinance. I highlighted that. I don't think we need that in there.
Yeah, I strongly agree with you that we don't need that in there.
Canton Township, wasn't it?
I think so, yeah, because if you're going to put turf grass down, seeding, it's okay. It doesn't have to be sod. So I think we just take that sentence out.
I agree. I think that we should consider sort of incentivizing perhaps some more creative uses as well. So I'm not sure how we get there, but pointing people to some preference that we might have for other types of cover in addition to turf grass, without, you know, excluding turf grass, but incentivizing people to look at alternatives.
Yeah, the, the first part of that one, the first sentence, you know, says it's got to be planted with grass, ground cover, shrubbery, or other sort of live plant material. So if you stick out the sentence out, that's, that's leaving it pretty open to almost anything. Just, you don't have to use sod.
And I don't know if you heard Jason's comment, but, you know, most of our turf grass that we use is, is non-native, which does conflict with the seventy-five percent requirement for native species earlier in the ordinance. So that is something I think that we ought to consider.
Yeah, I guess just to reiterate that point, Dan, I don't have an issue adding that language. And I certainly will. I would just say that if I were zoning administrator, I would not interpret grass lawn as part of landscaping, but of course, that's one person's opinion.
Can't we preface that in the, in the ordinance?
That it shouldn't be part of?
I mean, if that's, if that's how ultimately we feel, I mean, I don't, I, I'm with Nick on this. I don't, I don't think of ground cover as landscaping. I think of it as, you know, bringing in berm or rocks or shrubs or trees. I mean, if, if, I don't know, that's just me. I mean, that's just kind of how I would feel about it off the cuff. I mean, and if we don't mean to include it, we should, maybe we should exclude it.
I think we need to clarify it one way or another. I can have conversations with a couple of you offline, and we can figure out how to word that.
Which, which section are you looking at specifically?
No, I, I just said maybe we should preface it up in A or something that that we're not, you know, we should include or exclude what we intend this to enforce. Give it, give it.
Yep.
Sorry, Joel, B four, Ray talks about the seventy-five percent requirement for native species. And then grass, I believe, is under B one?
Oh, yep.
So if you exclude grass, I mean, are you going to exclude ground cover from that exemption as well? I'm not trying to complicate it. I mean, I, I agree.
You know, I always appreciate that.
We generally don't consider grass as part of it, but it's clearly written in here as a part of the landscaping. And so, you know, I think it could be as simple as, you know, under that seventy-five percent clause, you know, except for lawn-based grasses, you know, or.
Yep. I would agree. I mean, you look at a lot of commercial developments, and they have large lawn areas. If that was all considered, then I wouldn't consider it landscape. Landscaping is the stuff that's not lawn.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that that's generally how we think of it. I, I think it's problematic that we think of it that way, because the problem with lawns is that they have no redeeming quality to them, except they're nice to walk on and maybe nice to look at for some people, right? But, but I don't think we need to get into that. I think we ought to sort of abide by sort of the norms right now of our community and probably exclude ground covers or grass from that, from that standard. Jason?
Just out of curiosity, how would this apply to a, a golfing facility? Golf course, whatever they're called.
I was hoping Bert would chime in, because that's.
Anyhow, there might be some use cases that we think through that might, you know, get complicated. I, the, the one other thing, I, you know, the one thing that I would be strong on is agricultural uses, but I'm wondering if exemptions for in the rural district might be more applicable. I, just given what, you know, how, given parts of the community where I live, I, how that might apply.
Yeah, so I'm going to pull up the rural district here real quick and take a look at what's allowed by right and with a special use, just so everyone can get an idea, because I, I think you're probably on the right track there, Jason. So the language in rural, of course, allows for single-family housing, agricultural uses, and that's elaborated on. The standard language about religious institutions and educational institutions, public buildings, public and private recreational facilities of a non-commercial nature, like parks and camps, parkways, things like that. And then when you get down to special uses, there are some limited commercial uses. But those are still pretty restricted. So we're talking about commercial recreation facilities, including golf courses, racetracks, go-kart tracks, gun clubs, game preserves, private airports or, or landing fields, public or private sanitary landfills or junkyards, storage yards, veterinarians' offices. So it's not your, your broad, any commercial activity is allowed here. It's very specific. So I, I think you're on the right track.
So I guess under scope of application, it sounds like the, the, your, the application that what I'm hearing is triggered by a special use permit, right?
Those listed, those uses I just listed that relate to commercial uses are all by, with a special use permit?
But I'm looking under section A, scope of application, and it's, it's, it's applied to, you know, all uses that are developed, expanded, or changed to all lots, sites, and parcels. So I just worry that if someone builds a shed on their property or, you know, a silo or something like that on their farm, it's going to be triggered. And the building permit will be held up because they don't have, you know, the proper types of, you know, native species.
I mean, my sense of this is that it's in conversation with site plans, right, in our review of site plans. And so tying it to a site plan might take care of a lot of those concerns.
Yeah.
Yep. One other thing I was looking for in here, we haven't talked about street trees, or have we? I haven't seen anything in here about street trees.
There is no language in there yet. I have an email, actually, from a professor, a professor at Michigan State, trying to mash words together, who is in the Department of Forestry, and she actually had a conversation with the the forester for the city of Lansing, and they identified some trees that would work. I've also have a professional connection with just an independent arborist who is licensed to work both in Virginia and here in Michigan. How you get that combination, I don't know, but she was, she was open to, to having a conversation with me as well, if that's something we would like to do.
I think we need to include that, and I mean, as an example, on a street that I've driven down, they have river birches as street trees. That's a totally inappropriate tree along the road. And so I think we need to have some kind of requirement as to, we need street trees, but there needs to be a list of accepted trees.
And I have a list from her that she got from the forester for the city of Lansing that they mentioned trees that work well and trees that don't work well. I can certainly bring that list back the next time we see this ordinance, and we can have that conversation. Or instead of putting it specifically in the ordinance, it could be another instance where we adopt it or utilize it internally as a policy, and it could be approved by the planning commission or the zoning administrator.
And I think, I think as long as it's something we won't force, that's the key thing.
Yeah, I agree, and I know we have concerns about roots possibly interfering with utility infrastructure underneath the road, and, and so I'm not sure how we would handle that language, and, and I think that's an important conversation to have.
Okay, I, I want to move things forward a little bit. I think we've made some good progress here, and so we've got enough, I think, for Nick to work on. And Nick, feel free to reach out, and we can kind of talk about the suggestions that were put forward tonight. So I do want to move. So let's go to the report from Planner. Nick, you got anything else to add?
Real briefly, before we move on, do we want to set a public hearing date, or do we feel like we're not quite there yet?
I think we're not there, and I think this could be a little bit contentious, depending on how this eventually ends up, so let's.
It's fine. So, okay, all right, report from Planner. I feel like we've covered most of these things in communication. We have scheduled our second meeting of the broadband task force. That meeting will be Friday at ten AM via Zoom. The members of that task force have already been informed of that, and we'll be sending out Zoom information. As far as I'm aware, that'll be another open meeting that, you know, broadcast live, it'll be on Facebook, and the information will be on the the township's website. So looking forward to that conversation, and hopefully we can move some things forward. Really, I think that's it. I think we've talked about everything, so I'll leave it there.
Okay, any comments for Nick, questions? Okay, we have a last opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to speak, you can let us know with a real hand or a virtual hand, Karen, and then I think Jeff had his hand up, too.
Thank you. I wanted to take the time to thank you for your work again tonight on the marijuana. I, my concern in bringing it back to you was the competitive process and not to cause any additional confusion or to slight you for the work that you've done. You, you've done an amazing job. And it, part of it was just my concern over the competitive process, but I think that's been solved. It can move forward to the Board of Trustees, which I very much appreciate. And I just want to thank you for your time. I, I think what you guys do is amazing. I, I learn a little bit every time I watch you, and I think this is an amazing team, and I'm, I'm proud that you're, you're part of the best team, so thank you.
Thanks, Karen. So I have, Jeff, I thought I saw your hand up, but I don't see it anymore.
We have a phone number ending in eight, three, zero. They can unmute by dialing star six.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Oh, good. My name is Rick Curtis. I am former board member and former planning commission member. And welcome back to the, to the rat race, Joel. It's good to see you again. I'm glad to see that you decided to step up the plate again, and I, one of the things I've always admired about your service is that you never had a personal agenda, and you always did what was in the best interest of the township. I do have a couple of questions about the medical marijuana ordinance, though. At this point, I, what it, what it sounds like is we're trying to make this more competitive. One of the things that myself and several others have expressed their concern about is that there was no competitive process going on here. It looked like that there was an ordinance being designed for an individual. And as we, all those who have served on the planning commission, we know that that's actually illegal to do that. So it sounds like we're trying to make this more competitive, because I know that at one point in time, they had one application in, and they were not allowing other applications. They actually had closed down applications and said, no, we're not accepting any other applications. So it sounds like to me that you're trying to get that ironed out at this point. Am I correct in in that assumption?
I don't know if I can speak to the restrictions on the number of applications, but what we were trying to do tonight is to clarify the competitive review process. So when you have multiple applications, and it doesn't matter for how many open permits, right? When you have multiple applications, we have a process in place to ensure a fair and competitive review of those applications.
Right, of course, it wouldn't be fair and competitive if you only allowed just one application. Are we in agreement on that?
I don't think we're restricting the number of applications, Nick.
Dan, I'd just like to provide a little clarification. Rick, are you asking about the, the medical marijuana ordinance or the adult use?
Well, whatever ordinance you're working on at this point, I, I guess I'm a little confused. Well, whatever ordinance you're working on at this point, I, I guess I'm a little confused by that too, to be honest with you.
Okay. No, I appreciate that honesty. Um, so what we worked on tonight was the adult use ordinance. Um, that's the ordinance that does have the competitive review process if we receive multiple applications. Um, I think what, what you were speaking in reference to, uh, was back in the fall when we had, oh, uh, received an application for an actual medical, uh, provisioning center license. The way that that ordinance is written, we had only allowed for one permit for an adult, or excuse me, a medical provisioning center. And the way that state law is written and our ordinance is written is that the medical side, uh, does not have or require a competitive process for those permits. Um, so that's a distinction just between the medical and the adult use.
Well, I, I know you keep insisting on that, Nick, but I really think that you need to ask that of the attorney. Because I think you're asking the wrong question and therefore continue to get, continue to receive the wrong answer. I realize that it's only for one, uh, you, you can limit it to just one facility. But I, it goes against everything I've learned in my training as a planning commissioner and my training as, as a trustee to only allow one applicant. That would be in essence, you're making an ordinance that will benefit or hinder, whichever the case may be. In this case, it would be benefit, one individual, and that is illegal. And you need to ask, I don't know, maybe you're not understanding me because it is a little bit confusing. But this is something that I really hope that you'll clear up with, with the attorney. Because we certainly don't want to get into another situation where somebody is suing the township because they weren't given the opportunity, the same opportunity as John Doe down the road, who was given the, the license.
So Rick, I just want to reiterate, right, that the conversation tonight was about adult use marijuana, not medical marijuana. And so, you know, I guess to fast forward, you know, if we, we right now only allow one, uh, provisioning adult use marijuana, uh, permit in the township. So it is the case probably that if that one permit were being held by, uh, a, a business that the superintendent would not open the application process because we only have one to give. All right. Uh, but that would be the discretion of the superintendent. And so you wouldn't undergo a competitive review process. But we're not talking about medical marijuana tonight. We've talked about adult use marijuana. So I just want to, you know, so I'm not sure how much we can say more about it because that wasn't the conversation.
Right, but you have also referenced, and I don't know how this came down, and I'll be honest with you, I have not read through the ordinance. But everything that I'm gathering is that the only person that is, or well, not necessarily the only person, but it sounds like the person or the company that is going to get that adult use medical marijuana, or adult use marijuana license will be, uh, the facility that owns the, uh, existing medical marijuana license.
I don't think anybody here knows that with any clarity because we haven't gone through the competitive review and, uh, we don't know how many applications we might get. So I, I would disagree strongly that the implication that you think we've written this ordinance for a particular business entity. That's just not the case. In fact, tonight, what we have been talking about was ensuring that the competitive review, review process was indeed competitive. So I, I thank you for your
That's what I understand and that, and that certainly pleases me because I hate to see it. Like I said, somebody's going to put together a lawsuit. They're going to be unhappy with the outcome. And they may be right and whether they're right or wrong and whether they win or lose in court, it's going to cost us a lot of money in attorney fees to defend our process. That's my concern because frankly, I don't use the stuff. I don't care. I don't see it being harmful to the community. I do see it bringing in some tax revenue, creating some pretty good paying jobs as, as it has in other areas. So I kind of have mixed feelings, but overall, I guess I would welcome it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments. I'd encourage you to read the ordinance, you know, start there with the adult use ordinance. Uh, and you know, obviously if you have additional concerns after reading the ordinance, come back and talk to us. But I, I do want to move on to
I, I guess just keep in mind that I guess the point that I'm making is to keep in mind that we're not limiting this to the one individual who has already been approved with all the competitive process. That would, that would be, it'd just be unheard of. So thank you for your time again, Joel and all, all commissioners. Thank you guys for serving. I know that it's a sometimes thankless job, but it sometimes is very rewarding. And, and I hope, Joel, that in the future, everything's rewarding for you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Is, is there additional public comment tonight? I am not seeing anything. Taylor, you're not seeing anything? Okay, so let's move on. Uh, so we have a report from the board of trustees. Ryan, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, not much. We continue to meet and, and make small appointments to committees over time. Uh, we started to review these ordinances. Obviously we've paused on that. Uh, but for the most part, we're going to start, I think, looking at how we, uh, adjust the budget moving forward. Looking at what we've got left over, what we've got in the bank and maybe as COVID opens up more projects that we can take on. So I'm looking forward to those conversations as well.
Okay, thank you. And then last opportunity for planning commissioner comments on any topic whatsoever. No appetite to extend this meeting anymore, George. Thank you.
This is this George.
Hey, George, yeah.
I just wanted to welcome Joel also. I didn't get an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting and, uh, seeing him serve the community for so long. I'm very grateful.
Thanks, George. Appreciate that.
All right. Yeah, and we did have a really full agenda and Nick and I will try to work on maybe trying to air this down a little bit so we're not quite as long next time. But it's hard to know kind of how the conversation, uh, will go necessarily. But thanks for all, for all your, uh, comments and work and thanks for hanging in there. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Support, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is over. Thanks and have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everybody.